We will call the City of Vermillion Joint Jurisdiction with the Clay County Commission meeting to order. Katie, will you call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Jenawine.
Here.
Helwig.
Here.
County, want to go ahead and call yours to order? Do you want me to go through the agenda? Is there any chance to review the agenda for the meeting? If so, are there any changes that are motion to adopt?
Approval, second.
Motion approved by Councilor Price and a second by Councilor Helwig. Any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose saying nay. Agenda's adopted. We can do visitors to be heard at the same time, I think.
Okay. I'll call some information to order.
Mockler.
Here.
Gooferson.
Here.
Cheeseman.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing approval agenda.
Second.
Motion to the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose saying nay.
Agenda passes. For any item not on the agenda for the joint jurisdiction, is there any visitors to be Seeing none, we have no old business, but we do have new business. It's first reading of ordinance 1533 to amend the joint jurisdiction zoning regulations in reference light industrial district permitted uses definitions. Who wants to start off, Jose or Noah?
Good afternoon. So for the permitted definition, it's going to be a train car repair and maintenance station. We took it from both the truck repair and then other repair ordinances that we already have, and we folded it into the train. But any building or any building or premise involving the maintenance, service, storage, or repair of train cars, no new train cars shall be built at this location. So this isn't the heavy industrial of building actual train cars, it's just the repairing. So changing out the wheels, what have you. So, any questions?
Before Noah speaks, are you presenting it all, Jose, or?
I guess for the most part, it's going to be the same thing as what Noah mentioned. I do want to say that during our presentation, we did give the planning commission two different options. One of having the permitted use as Noah presented or proposed, but we did ask the commissioners to consider additional criteria. And then the second option that we proposed was making the use a conditional use. That way, there could be a discussion at the planning and zoning meeting if any of the owners had any, any of the neighboring owners had any concerns, that that way, those concerns could be reduced or abated somehow during the meeting with any conditions that the planning commissions may put into use. At the end of all that conversation, the planning, the city planning and zoning commission did make a motion to, to recommend what's been presented to the council, which is all those uses with a red portion there, which essentially limits the hours of operation between six AM and nine PM any day of the week. The city's planning commission recommended that, and so did after discussion, so that the county's planning and zoning commission.
Thank you, Jose. Should we just have any visitors to be heard before the governing body takes discussions? Are there any visitors to be heard on that item? Come on up, Jim.
Good evening. Jim Peterson, Vermillion Chamber and Development Company. So I do have an NDA, so I can't disclose name, or there are certain things, but I will talk to this project. So one, it is for railcar inspection and repair down at that egg opportunity land. So all railcars have to get inspected, some once every year, some up to 10 years, my understanding. Most of it's going to be grain cars in our area. So they actually work for the end user, which some are the big names, and then some money flows, right, because there is a rail spur is the interest. They bring in about 15 to 25 cars a week, inspect, do some assembly work, like jack it up, take axles off, do some other thing, and inspect. Could be some cleaning, but minimal. And/or underneath a grain car, my understanding, they could take that section off that may jam and have to replace it. Most of the parts would be stored indoors. Some questions I asked, like if they're going to move it, what is it? It's more like a tract mobile. It's not a locomotive. We looked at, and the previous meeting went through it, it's almost like a buzz of a lawnmower when they did the audiology tests, et cetera. So it should be very good to where it's located. There's no hazardous materials. They have four other locations and do work in some, you know, close to residential communities. They're going to create initially about 15 to 20 jobs, family wage paying with benefits. In addition, we've worked with Go-Head to secure an SD Works loan. So they're very supportive of the project at the, you know, top of South Dakota government that we work with for economic development. There are other locations are in Minnesota, North Dakota, and Iowa. So what's interesting here is to be a leader in the South Dakota area. I do have a rep from their firm tonight in the back. His name is Cole Crosby. If you have questions, then it's up to him what to disclose more or not. So, very supportive of the project, great to our community, 15 to 20 jobs. It improves the tax base, you know, jobs, put people in, spend money in our town. So, that's what I'm saying. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any other visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, move to the governing body for any discussion, any discussion by the county or the city?
I was going to thank planning and zoning commissions for doing the work and coming to some consensus about how we should best amend the ordinance here.
Any conversation? Counselor Jenawine?
Yeah, so the intention is to have the maintenance inspections between 6:00 and 9:00, but I'm curious about how these will be coming into town and if we'll see an increase of nighttime train activity or anything like that. I don't know who I'm directing this question at, but if someone has that answer, I'm curious.
Jose, Noah, maybe Cole, or Jim? Cole, come on up, sure. If you just want to, since you're not known, your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Yeah, Cole Crosby, I'm from North Dakota, Fargo, North Dakota. I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear your question from back there.
Yeah, so I understand that the plan is to limit the maintenance and inspections between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM. My question is about whether or not, like how these train cars would come into town and if we'd see a, an increase in train traffic, like in the middle of the night.
It's a great question, and the quick answer is no, you wouldn't. So, the railroad, the BNSF would pick a time, typically a designated time, say 12:00 PM on Thursday. They would take all of our cars that need to come to our site, deliver them at 12:00 PM on Thursday, and then pick up the cars that need to go out at that same exact time and go back out. So, you know, the BN isn't going to deliver cars at nighttime, essentially. So, it'll be all daylight hours.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any motions on the city side? I think you're good, Cole. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Is there any motions on the city side? I believe it'd be a motion to advance if there is, it's a first reading.
Someone would move to the second.
Motion to advance, second reading by Counselor Holland and a second by Counselor Murrah. Any discussion? Do you want to do your motions, or do you want us to finish ours out first? All those in favor of the motion to advance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose by saying nay. City passes to advance the second reading.
All those in motion, move to advance the second reading. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes.
There is no other business for the joint jurisdiction, so is there a motion to adjourn on the city side?
So I'm a second.
Motion by Counselor Helwig, second by Counselor Price. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose saying nay. City's adjourned.
Move to adjourn, second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes.
The public just wants to give us about two minutes or reconvene. We'll call the regular meeting for Monday, August 18th at 6:00 PM to order. Katie, will you call roll?
Toller, Lieber, Price.
Here.
Holland.
Here.
Jenawine.
Here.
Helwig.
Here.
Cheeseman.
Here.
Murrah.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes from the August 4, 2025 special meeting and the August 4, 2025 regular meeting? If so, are there any changes to the minutes, or is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Counselor Cheeseman, second by Counselor Holland. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose by saying nay. Motion carries. Adoption of the agenda. Is there any chance to review the agenda? If so, is there a motion to adopt, or is there any changes to the agenda?
Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda by Counselor Price, second by Counselor Helwig. Any other discussion on the agenda? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose by saying nay. Agenda's adopted. Visitors to be heard. For visitors to be heard, persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized and go to the podium and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, or members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard, and remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For each agenda item, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced and explained by staff, and any citizen who wishes to may speak for one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and given to the governing body for possible action. At that point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current item unless the council member's moves to allow another person to speak and unanimous consent is from the council. Questions, however, may be directed to staff or member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. Are there any visitors to be heard for any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have an agenda item for visitors to be heard, a civilian hero award of Chief Callahan.
Somebody taller than me was at the mic first. Well.
Is my off?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, members of the public, distinguished guests. My name is Matthew Callahan. I am the chief of fire EMS for the City of Vermillion. As you know, the city's been designated as a cardiac-ready community a couple of months ago, and that title was tested not just a few weeks later. Tonight, we come before you to recognize four individuals that without hesitation assisted in an incident that occurred on June 27th at our city swimming pool. We're happy to share, we had a positive outcome, no thanks to the hard work of our civilian heroes, reinforcing as a true test on what it means to be a cardiac-ready community. These individuals responded in heroic fashion and assisted in saving the life of an individual that they did not know. Their actions resulted in a positive outcome of the individual. Despite any hesitation they may have had, they acted with courage and compassion, exemplifying the highest of civic responsibility. Their actions reflect not only outstanding personal character, but also the type of heroism we aim to recognize and celebrate within our community. So tonight, these four individuals will be given the civilian hero award, as their deeds stand as a powerful reminder of the impact everyday citizens can make in times of crisis. Will the following individuals that are here tonight please step forward to accept your award from Division Chief Klunder. And Diane Hanson. On behalf of the City of Vermillion, we thank you for your outstanding response in this event and showing what a true good Samaritan is. Please help us congratulate these individuals If anyone would like to take photos, family or whatever, now is your chance.
What we'll do is we'll have you guys, if you want to just back up a little bit, we'll stand up and so you guys can do a photo. Chief Callahan, Klunder. Actually, if we cut, John, you want to, Chief Callahan, come in on this?
Oh, that's okay.
There we go.
Suppose those can have to go to school.
You want to stand up here? Thank you as well. I just want to quick say, it's a true testament, and I can say as a former first responder, is there's no bigger privilege or honor than helping another in need and saving a life. So, thank you so much for your guys' work. Thank you. On that note, are there any other visitors to be heard? We have no public hearings today. We do have one old business item that is the second read of ordinance 1537. That is amending Title 15 land usage reference to the Erickson addition land going from general business to a general industrial district. We have
Sorry. So as you mentioned, this is for Lot 8A, Block 7 of the Erickson addition. This parcel of land is situated right in between Goodwill and the VTC to the east and Bauer to the north and Duke Street to the south. The property, what's being requested by, to the council of the council is to rezone this from the general business district to the GI general industrial district. This item was discussed at the, at the August 4th meeting. At that meeting, the city council moved unanimously to advance the ordinance for consideration at tonight's meeting. With that being said, staff and the planning and zoning commission recommend that the previously described property be rezoned from the GB general business district to the GI general industrial district. In this being the second reading, a roll call is required.
Thank you, Jose. Is there any visitors to be heard on this item? Seeing none, counsel for any discussion for this? Is there any motions? Motion to approve, second reading by Counselor Murrah, second by Counselor Price. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, move to your machines for vote tabulation. Eight yays, zero nays, motion carries. Thank you, Jose. Moving on to new business, we have a resolution to adopt a project plan for a tax increment financing or TIF number 12 for lots on Cottage Avenue for Cottage Place Edition located at 502 Cottage Avenue. Alex?
Thank you. So previously, we established the boundaries for the TIF 12, so now we're going to be looking at the project plan. With this plan, there's about an estimated 20, 24 two-bedroom affordable apartment units, and that would be located about 502 Cottage Avenue. With this plan, the basis S value of the property is $226,633, and this is a developer's TIF. The estimated eligible TIF cost is about 1.1 million, but that will need to be generated by the, by the developer, so that's not exactly set in stone. Per the project plan, the non-eligible TIF cost is about 4 million. That project plan is attached to the packet and was approved by the planning and zoning commission. The project plan outlines that this will include site preparation, street curb and gutter drainage, public infrastructure, and other TIF eligible expenses, and that can be found on page five of the plan. Overall, again, there's going to be about 24 units, each with two bedrooms, and this will be affordable housing. And with this being a developer's TIF, a developer's agreement will need to be done. With that, the developer will need to be approved with that agreement as an additional step in the TIF process. This would provide for the actual transfer of property tax receipts. This agreement provides an opportunity for the city council to establish performance criteria to help protect the public, such as timeliness of construction beginning or being completed, payment of city sales tax or other relevant items. Additionally, city council member Jay Toller did create a spreadsheet comparing TIF 10, TIF 11, and TIF 12, and that was attached in the packet. The city council is encouraged to take public comments on the TIF 12 project plan. Financial considerations, there's none besides the publication. Overall, administration recommends approval of the resolution adopting the TIF 12 project plan.
Thank you, Alex. Is there any visitors to be heard on this item before counsel takes it? Come forward. Jim?
Jim Peterson, Vermillion Chamber and Development Company. Just want to, from an economic development housing standpoint, say we're very supportive of this project. We go back to the 2022 housing study, which showed the need in town from apartments, subsidized housing, single-family units, pricing was different then, et cetera. And if we look at but for a TIF, this project wouldn't go forward. We know how many, so just let the public and the council know, we do a study every three to four months on the capacity of multifamily and apartments that are available in town. Our most recent one was on July 25th. So we went out to about the 10 top property management firms in town or individual people that own apartments, and they will all be full by fall. There's only about 15 available right now. We also work closely with the university to understand their needs today and what they're forecasting in the future. So the demand is there, we're not oversaturated anyway. So we're just wanted to reiterate from the behalf of the Chamber and Economic Development, things we're doing in town to grow our population, and the need is there. So supportive of the project.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any other visitors to be heard on this? Now, Nick, you only get five minutes.
Okay. Nick Slattery with AMS Building Systems. Wanted to say thanks for letting us have an opportunity to, to work towards this venture. I did want to read something to you guys that I had read at the planning and zoning. AMS is a locally owned and operated company with multiple other companies that all contribute heavily into the tax revenue over a million, each of which invest substantially into our community through many initiatives. We understand the needs of our community and wish to fill those needs with great craftsmanship and tradesmanship that we have here within our community. This would not be possible without the cost-sharing TIF plan that has been, that is provided in front of you. AMS is more than willing to take on the risk to benefit Vermillion by providing housing that is currently not there, and we will continue to do so with multiple other projects in our pipeline. I hope this committee will see our efforts and willing to stand beside us in this project, as current market conditions will not allow this project to move forward without your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. You have only one minute. Good job.
Don Peterson, I'm an attorney for Mitchell and Morgan Thielar. You've heard everybody explain the project, and so I just came up to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Don. Is there any other visitors to be heard before the council takes discussion? Seeing none, counsel for discussion. Counselor Toller?
Nick, I talked to you last week about some of the things I thought were maybe a little high on here. We had a conversation about that. And a couple of things I see from the final version, and I think there was a couple more versions turned in this week, with the final version being of the TIF, basically the TIF interest cost about 440,000. That's the current, most recent version?
Yes.
If I'm correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And kind of behind the scenes, we've been looking at doing some things to get some guidelines kind of for these TIF projects going forward, so that we're being equitable and fair kind of across the board. And I, as much as anybody, want to see a local person doing some of these and getting the bids and things. But when I, when I kind of compared the numbers to some of the past tips we've done recently, a couple of numbers really jumped out at me, and you can maybe explain them a little bit. Start at the bottom here. Interest expense per bedroom, we're almost $9,300 per bedroom is what's going to cost in interest. The last two have been 1,700 and 3,200. So I'm seeing a big chunk of that, chunk of the interest that we're going, the tax payer's going to be paying back is going to become a, that's a pretty good chunk compared to where we've done recently.
So, in this project, there's going to be two separate loans, and one loan is being, the larger the two is being secured by the project. And the income that that project will produce will pay that, service that debt. The second debt, the smaller one, since the project is going to be pledging that one, the, to get the, the bank's request was that a portion, and that's not all the interest on that loan, but a portion of that interest, because they want to use the TIF as security, the TIF proceeds as security for that loan. And that's just what the, what the bank came out with. I mean, that's what they're requiring. So we're putting that, it's, it's an eligible TIF expense. And in our case, that means Nick has to pay more money out of his pocket towards the project, but it's the only way to make it work financially.
Okay. Well, I'm going to be, I'm going to be upfront with some of these numbers here that we'll talk about. I'm probably going to be against this, only because the number one thing I hear in town with, when it comes to property taxes for residential or commercial is just how high they are, and how high they're going up, and how high they, how quickly they are. And then when I see this big number compared to some of the other tips we've done, that just seems like it's a little excessive. And I know you, we probably do need this to get the, to get the deal rolling. It's just, I think that this is too much of a burden on the, what I'm paying, what any business owners paying in town. So I'll give you another one to explain here. TIF interest to TIF total cost, 40% for this one, so, you know, creeping up there on half of the, half of the TIF costs are going to be in interest. Whereas we just had a $6 million TIF, 9.82%, $3 million TIF at 10.87%. So as you can see, that's four times higher than what, what we're paying for the interest quotient on those. Once again, I think that's probably a little high for what we're looking to maybe precedent, we're looking to set going forward. And this is just my opinion. I mean, everybody else obviously can vote how they want to. I don't think it's a secret, we do need multifamily housing in town, and that's what we're trying to do. I just want to make, see it done responsibly, inequitable.
Again, the total TIF costs in this are about?
Real, real quick, Don, sorry. If you could just speak a little bit more into the mic, I know there's a hard time hearing, especially online.
So, total costs of the project are about 5.9 million. The developer costs that he's paying out of his pocket are 4 million. And then, TIF eligible costs out of that would be, there's 1,835, that would be eligible. But because of what the assessment, or the proposed, or the anticipated assessment's going to be, we're tipping for 1,107,917. Now, if there was a higher assessment, you know, if, if, but based, based on, we spent a lot of time with the DOE, Clay County DOE, and trying to get it down to where we think she was comfortable with what she thinks the taxes will be. So we could have came in with an inflated number, that would make that look lower. But we wanted to be as straight as we could with, with, with the council. So that's, so we're, Nick's going to spend $5 million, almost 5.9 on the project, and we think the assessed value, when working with the director of equalization, is going to be, once the factors figure in, it's going to be about 2.5.
We spent, we spent a lot of time, Taylor and I did, together with her, and some of the numbers that they've been using in the past were not accurate. And knowing that, we want that to be more tolerable as we grow together as a community, instead of it being under, undervalued, have more of a value that is more realistic than what it is today. And so we actually bit that bullet and wanted to share that responsibility to do this project as things progress. I mean, we're going to do more as we go in the future as well. I understand your concern, I really do. I think that, that with what costs are going to do to us throughout this project, if there were a way to magically save some money after doing three, three years worth of work on trying to get these costs down, so that it was palatable and affordable for someone to move into. to move into, it, we're down to the last, the last little bit. And so that's where we're at with it, and to try to bite off anymore would put us in the, in a position where we couldn't do it.
Yeah, we just, Nick just wants to be as close to positive as he can be. And so we could have just taken the construction numbers, that 5.8 million number, and then based the increment on that, off of that number, which is what we do in some TIFs, because we take the building costs, and we think building costs are going to be pretty close to what the assessed value is going to be. And that, that TIF number would have been a lot bigger, and then the interest versus expense would have been wider. But we took the conservative approach that the Clay County DOE wanted us to take, and so that, all of a sudden, that shrunk everything.
As well as you. So your conversation with me struck a note, okay? And so I went back with Taylor, and Don, and Skylar, and we all came back to crunch numbers again to make it more, I'm not going to use the word appealing, because that's not the word I'm looking for, but more on the lines of what you were looking for as far as your investigation of this. So that's why we went and sat with Linnea the whole time, to discuss how we could make this more understandable to what the values are today. Not undervalued, not under, you know, not inflated by any means, because that's not going to help to borrow from Peter to pay Paul. It doesn't. It just doesn't make a good move to step forward that way. So we, we tried to find the middle ground where I could afford to do it, or AMS could afford to do it, with this assistance.
Again, it's a but for, there's a need for housing in Vermillion. This is what it's going to cost for this project to go forward. And, and so, but, but for the TIF, this project would not go forward, will not go forward.
Yeah, and I respect that. I'm just, one of these TIFs hasn't even started yet, and it's significantly less palatable than, than this one, just, I mean, by the numbers wise. And like I said, I, I'm for it, and I think we do need to grow Vermillion, but I think we need to grow Vermillion, you know, responsibly, when we look at the burden we're putting on everyday property owners right now, and then we're giving you kind of a pretty good kickback along the way for the next 20 years, hoping to maybe get this paid for in 15.
Correct. Right.
So, so that's just my concern with it, and take that for what it's worth, I guess.
Well, you know, we've, I've invested, my company has invested everything we've got into Vermillion. You know, we don't, we don't have any other interests, other than to maybe go outside of town to bring funds back to Vermillion, to spend that money back here in town and improve this. We've bought ground in town that was not viable. With the city's help, you know, we were able to put those houses back into the tax base. So we're just asking for a little help on this end of it, to keep us going locally as, as a local builder, and, you know, it's, it's just at that point right now where I can't go that much further without having that extra income or that extra monies there to help with the infrastructure costs.
Yeah, yeah, and I totally get that. You know, I'm just looking like, if, if this is the precedent we're going to be set going forward, these are the numbers that we could probably expect to follow going forward, and on any bigger projects. Like, say, the, the one that we just did, then, then the, then the TIF would had to been like, what was it, TIF cost $6 million? If we're going to go with these numbers, you know, they've got to be four times higher. So then, do we have a, do we have a $24 million TIF we're going to do?
You'd have to have the increment to support it. And if it doesn't, and if it doesn't have the increment to support it, then you wouldn't do it.
And that's exactly what I'm saying.
Right. But, I mean, from that project would have to, the increment from that project would have to support the amount of the TIF. In this case, we lowered the request from one of the earlier plans, because this increment is what the DOE thinks it'll be assessed at, and this, and this increment that this is going to generate will pay off this TIF, hopefully in less than 20 years.
Okay.
Skylar, do you want to say something? Well, hold on, we have, we're closed on visitors to be heard, so unless there's a question, hold on one second. Is there any, any other comments or questions from council members? Councilor Holland?
I'm not as adept as others at figuring out the mathematics, but it looks like we're paying almost half of our TIF just for tax purposes, or interest, I mean, purposes. And yet, all the infrastructure that we normally pay is all done on this one. So we're talking about just this, almost half of the TIF, just for what, cement?
No, the infrastructure meaning concrete, sewer, water.
It's all there already?
No, it isn't.
It's in the street. It's not...
It's not, it's not brought into the property.
Right.
John, you want to...
All those costs have to be brought in from the, from the street.
I, I think maybe there's difference in language a little bit, in that what Mr. Slattery's referring to is, yes, it's there in the street going north to south by the property, but infrastructure cost is defined in the TIF plan, it's your water and sewer pipes to bring it to the west to serve the development. It's the concrete that you're going to build your parking lot on. It's those sorts of things. So, in here, infrastructure means your parking lot, your water and sewer connections. It's, in some TIFs, like the last one we did with the stencil one, it is about putting the street in. In this case, it is not. Infrastructure is a broader content.
Is Cottage Place currently a city street?
It is a city street. It's been, it's been dedicated through Eastmets, a lot of them. But, yeah.
So is that still going to be a city street, or are we going to vacate that then to...
No, it's still going to be a city street. There's actually people that utilize it further to the west and to the north of Mr. Slattery's property.
So in a way, that's getting paved, then, with this project?
No, it's not getting paved. All their access is going to be off Cottage. If they would have had access off Cottage Place, and that would have required it to be paved, but they're not.
Okay.
Mayor Cole? What Skylar asked to comment on is directly related to some of these costs and things like that.
Is there unanimous consent to allow him to speak?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just got to get unanimous consent, all the rules.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Skylar Mickelson. I'm an attorney for Resolve Legal. I work with Morgan Thielar on TIF projects. I was here in front of you for the first developer TIF not long ago. From the back, just listening to some of the questions, both from Councilman Tolliver and Holland, interest was a large ticket item there. And I just wanted to point out that as it pertains to this project, not your guys' policies moving forward, but if you take out that interest expense entirely, we're still, we still have another 1.4 million in eligible cost, and we're asking for 1.1. So regardless of what this looks like, or what you guys would like to develop moving forward, we're still asking for less than what we've identified in TIF eligible cost.
And then, why are you doing that? Why would, why would you not ask?
To be more transparent. Statutorily, we're going to take the, that is a TIF eligible expense, and so, I think it makes us and our, our developers say, here's what we could TIF up for, we're only asking for 1.1. So it's, it's labeled TIF eligible, we're not asking for that full extent, for a number of reasons, but...
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? I'm looking here, building permit, is it part of the TIF when one would be pulled, or when do you plan employing one for that?
It's been pulled.
Is it?
And approved.
Okay. So you expect to put shovels in the ground within the year that I...
Tomorrow.
If approved?
I'm kidding. Oh, yeah, I got to pay for it, I'm sorry. Thank you, John.
Any, any other questions or discussions?
Yeah, I'm wondering what the bottom line is in, in a couple of places. And number one being the people of our community, well, how many, how far are taxes going to go up?
They shouldn't go up at all.
Well, hold on, hold on, Mr. Prescott, go ahead.
So, in essence, the, our community will still receive, and I apologize, as Alex mentioned, 223,000, something like that. So that number, the assessed value with the TIF district, the city, the county, the school district, or water district will still receive property taxes on that current assessed value of 200 and some thousand. So any growth with the structure being there, being occupied, all those things, once it's all done, anything, any assessed value that tax on that amount of the 200 and some thousand will go to back, it'll come, go to the county, they'll pay it to the city, and they'll see if it issue the check to the developer. So that's the increment piece.
And the, and the schools held harmless through, through a formula, so they, they, they still get their full share. It's just, it just comes from everybody in the state.
So much, much like the last TIF that we just closed out, once it's done, the 1.1 some million is taken care of, it goes, then goes back on the tax roll. Whereas right now, with it being undeveloped, unmade, un, yeah, undeveloped, there would be minimal property tax collected from that. Once it would be closed out, that assessed property tax would be much higher, am I catching all this right? Would be coming off of that, that time.
Yes, I guess, to your question, Mr. Schuesman, if there's a downside to the community, if you will, is that during the time, I'll say year three through 20, when it's more developed and there's higher assessed value, the community does not have that higher assessed value. They're still paying their taxes based on the higher assessed value, but the community is not going to receive property taxes above the current assessed value of 226,633. So when it's worth a million dollars, the community is only receiving property taxes based on the 226. They're paying it on the million, but that increment is what goes back to help fund the improvement cost.
The other thing, if I could just, Mr. Thielar, you're asking, so there are, Skylar's right, when we say there's 1, 1.8 million dollars of eligible cost, and so that's what we could TIF for, but we don't want to TIF for more than what we think that the increment, you know, what the taxes are going to generate. And when we initially set this, it would have generated that, but again, after spending time with the DOE, there's, there, we're following their rules and their formula, and so it lowered that. And so that's why we're saying, although we could TIF for 1.8, it doesn't look like it's going to generate that much in, in real property taxes, so we're going to take the lower number and not, and not, you know, ask for the bigger number.
And from my understanding, I suppose if it goes higher, it would pay itself off sooner, just like the other TIFs have, is that accurate, John?
Right. That, that's the hope, is that if, if, if the DOE is wrong, and it does get, it's assessed higher, then it'll get paid off quicker. Might be 15 years, might be 16, but it'll get paid off quicker.
Is there, is there any other questions or comments from the council at all?
Well, my last comment too, then, is, like I said, Nick, I definitely want this, I want you to succeed, and I want this housing project to go to. But when I look at, like, your TIF costs, 1.1 million for 48 units, the, the city's kicking in almost $23,000 per bedroom unit here. I think that, I just think that's a big number. And it may, and it may be a real number, and it may be a real number we have to face. I'm only comparing them to the last two TIFs I've done since I've been on, on here. And when you look at what is, what it's going to cost us in payback time, and dollars out of the city's pocket, 23,000 per bedroom's a lot. That's like I'm going to buy a four-bedroom house and turning it into a four-bedroom rental, I'm coming to the city asking for $88,000 to help with that.
It's hard to put an analogy against apartment against a house loan.
It is, it's still, at the end of the day, there's still four people sleeping in a four-bedroom, regardless of what it is.
But, but, but remember that if, but for the TIF, this project doesn't happen, so you're not, the city's not losing out on anybody because the project isn't going to go forward.
Oh, I think everybody understands.
And then it's going to be taxed at what it's...
Yeah, and everybody understands, everybody understands that, it's just what position do we want to put back on the, the future taxpayers of Vermillion, that what cost is going to be acceptable? And I think that's some of the guidelines we've been kind of trying to, trying to get in place with some of these stuff, like what is acceptable, and what's, what's a fair deal for everybody?
I think that, one of the things that we're trying to help with on this, is the reality and the transparency of, of how assessments have been made in previous years. And that's why we came down on our costs, is that there, the county is getting to the point now where they're going to be able to keep up with that, with the new, the new equipment that they have, the new updated software, and the information that we've given them this up-to-date is real information. It's not, it's, there's, there's nothing fake about it. You know, some people don't turn in all their, all their bills. Some people don't, you know, manipulate it, if I might say. We're not trying to manipulate. Alls we're doing is sharing the information that we've, we've brought to the table from doing our own research, together, the four of us, five of us, sorry. So, and I, I'm being sincere about that, so...
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And like I said, I want you to be successful as much as anybody. But I haven't had the time to look and see what, you know, comparable TIFs are going for, what, what cost, like what, what do we, what it's a cost in Yankton to put a TIF in, or what's the cost in Aberdeen or Watertown, or similar sized cities, to see like, what's the city's kickback, you know, per sleeping unit, bedroom, if you will.
And, and that would be a great moving forward procedure to get involved with?
I, and I totally agree, and that's why I will vote for probably no tonight, until we can, until we can look at those things.
Having, having the opportunity and the time that I've got invested in it right now, I might, you know, it just, it's, this is the only way I can make this happen.
Yep. I completely understand that.
John, you have a comment?
I guess maybe, if, and this probably might fall to Don or Skylar, no offense, Nick, but if I'm looking at page 16, we reference that the total eligible costs are one, just over 1.8 million. And that's, if, if you will, the eligible costs. And I understand, and before the council, I think receives this point as well, you're requesting 1.1 million, $7,917. So, and I've heard some discussion amongst the council that I think interest costs in particular seem to be of a particular concern. So all the eligible costs add up to 1.8, you're only asking for 1.1, get all that, how do we, and with these discretionary project costs, items can be moved from one category to another.
Correct.
So how do we collectively work together so that the interest cost either doesn't exceed the 444, perhaps we can pull that down, since we're not asking for that? I, I realize the interest costs may be the interest costs, maybe that one's not as, as fluid as the other ones. Is there something that we can do to say that the interest costs would not exceed the 444-870, but other ones, such as our affordable building permit fees are not quite as high as shown here?
Oh, I see.
You know what I'm saying? So we have a list of costs that are 1.8, we're only asking for 1.1. Interest cost, as I'm picking up here, is certainly something that the council feels pretty important about. How do we figure out the, the good numbers there? Is that something we can hammer out with our developers agreement, what those numbers would not exceed in those categories? I realize the state law provides fluidness, that you can move it from one category to another.
Well, we're pretty solid. I mean, we're, and that's not, that, that interest figure is lower than what the actual interest is going to be on that loan. I mean, that's not 100% of the interest on that loan. In fact, it's, I think there's 2.5% more that, that, that Nick's paying out of his pocket on that loan.
Three and a half.
Three and a half more on that particular loan, plus all the interest on the, on the, on the other loan.
So maybe a way to address this is that the interest expense of the 1.1 eligible, or 1.1 that would be provided, would not exceed 444-870.
Yes.
And that gives some peace of mind to the council, that they know that's their cap, if you will.
Right, because, yeah, I, I should have said that, the 444-870 is not the total interest amount on that 1.1 million dollar loan. That, that's, that, there's still 3.5% of that total loan that, that Nick's paying, so. So that's not all the interest, so if, if you wanted to cap the interest at that 44870 number, I think we could do that in the developer agreement. Because we've, we've, I mean, we're set at the bank, we know what our interest rates are, we know what we're borrowing, if we hit the TIF. So Nick can pay a portion of that interest on that loan, but he needs help with, with a portion of it, too.
So let me ask you this, John. In reference to that, if the council was to want that wording in that developers agreement, is that something that's, that's not in this, it'd be in a future document, I assume?
There's another document. If you approve this, then John and I put together a developer agreement that is brought back in front of the city council for approval, and that's where that language would be.
And that's where that language would be.
Yes.
Jay, does that address any of your concerns on that aspect? I know there's other stuff, but...
Yeah, and I get you can, you can work with the numbers when, we got 1.0 eligible, and we're doing 1.1, so you can swing those things around however you want to, make them look on a spreadsheet. But, but the bottom dollar, bottom line to me is it's costing us $23,000 per bedroom unit to go up. And is that going to be our guideline then going forward? If it is, I guess I'm on board, but that seems like a pretty big number for assistance?
Is there any other comments from any other council members? Feedback? Is there any, council gentleman?
So, we've had a lot of TIFs, and I think that what you are encountering is we are So, we've had a lot of tiffs, and I think that what you are encountering is we are approaching to fatigue, I think, you know, I, I think we did, number eight was just four years ago at the most, I mean, it was when I was on council, so it hasn't been that long. And, so, and, and I was very, I've been very supportive of developer tiffs because I know that it shows that we are investing in the community, and I appreciate that we have a local developer here who wants to invest in the community. One question I have about how this one compares to some of the others would be, the developer tiffs specifically, would be the affordable housing piece, have they all been classified as affordable housing, and what, what does that mean for this one and, and your plans here?
So there is a, there is a number, or, for the exact language, but the state of South Dakota comes out with an affordable housing rental and, and purchase, and so this would be rental, and we can't exceed that, the, the percentage of that, that, that the state sets out, so we have to meet that affordable housing definition, affordable rental property.
Okay, and do you know what that currently is in Clay County or Vermillion?
I, I don't know what currently is.
Does anybody know, Jim, do you know that number, roughly, ballpark?
The single-family housing number, I believe, is 385,000, but I do not know the, the rental unit prices.
That mic's not going to get you from there, sorry.
I know when we did the previous TIF, developers' TIF, where the risk on the developer, it's above our normal averages in town, so it is quite high, even at, with our lower income in, let's say, Vermillion versus other counties, even that rent rate for a single bedroom is higher than what is charged today in that county, but I don't have it offhand, I can get it to you for a while.
I think we had discussed that in the last TIF, I want to say there was some of that.
Right, it's, and that's, I think across the board, maybe every place but Sioux Falls and South Dakota, the, the average rent is lower than what that affordable rate could be.
And that rate is set by the state?
Yes.
Looks like we got a number.
Yeah.
So, for the 2024 state median income, rents are at 60% of area median income, so zero bedrooms, 999 a month, one bedroom is 1,00141, two bedrooms 1,00284, three is 1,00427, four is 1,00541, five bedroom is 1,00655, and that would be the state median income, 95,100, and then the rent, that, that's, that's 60%, and 80% is, then the numbers are higher, and 80% is the goal, they have to be at 80%. And so those numbers are for no bedrooms is 1,00331, one bedroom is 1,522, two bedrooms is 1,00712, three is 1,00902, four is 2,054, and five is 2,206, and so that's, that's what it is today, at the 80%, which is what the, the income level is.
Okay, and the, and these are all two-bedroom, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the council at all? I think the, the Hard Balancing Act, to what Counselor Tolliver is speaking, I think the other council members have, is what is that number balancing, obviously without the TIF? The, the project doesn't move forward, and we have, have an issue, I know Mr. Peterson had spoke about the housing need, and we also have to balance that in there. A quick question of mine has already been brought to my attention the last couple of days, is how's that housing need, how do we foresee that housing need with the recent news of the university? Jim, I don't know if you want to speak on that, what we're projecting potentially on that.
We did talk to the university, some of us on our call, and what their.
It's your mic, because.
Sorry, Jim Peterson? Yeah, as I said, we looked at that housing study, all things considered, in July, so virtually they're full, there are about 10 apartments open, and it's going to be full in the fall. We talked to the university after announcement of Med School relocating there, we know roughly people impacted, students, et cetera. We also know what they're, in their projects of maybe to upgrade some of their dorms in the future, if those goes through, and what their need is. So we know there's a couple hundred need in apartments, bedrooms today, not just for the university, but there's more than a couple hundred if you look at keeping some of our young professionals in town or other people that want to move back to town. So the needs in the, we always say, without the university anything, today, 200 to 400 new apartments we can absorb. So it's a higher number, so we need apartments, we don't have people living here, working here because we don't have, whatever you want to deem as affordable, housing apartments available, or then you get into a single-family home. So hopefully that answered your question.
It did, thank you, Jim.
So we did incorporate those newest events from last week, announcement of Med School.
And a little follow-up to that then, too, does that include like the 336 that we've already got planned going up?
The ones that we know of, we're waiting for Stensel to break ground, yes, so that would take some out of there, and those are staggered over town. We know other ones that are in the works or flux, that may or may not come to fruition, and some more smaller ones in the queue. So yet even considering those, there is a substantial need of over 200 plus in town, depending what else happens, that I'm not, don't want to, at liberty to say publicly, there could be even a more need. So we don't, myself or others here, we don't want to get oversaturated or any of that, we're, you know, we're conscious of that fact, but there is a housing need today at various levels of various types, that we're not filling the need.
One of the things, sorry. And I think, I think one of the biggest things, like I said, it's a balancing act, I do appreciate Nick and his team for going back to the drawing board and revising those numbers from initially, the initial number you came to us with, I, I recognize that, it's definitely a, Counselor Tolliver, I think it's definitely a hard pill to swallow on that, but on the, the flip side of it is, is there's also nothing going in there, and there's nothing there right now, so it's kind of an investment towards your futures. The way I look at it is, it, it's just that, it's how much is the city willing to invest in it for it to pay off later? Bliss Point, obviously it's a different kind of residential, it's a single-family home residential, it's paying off rather nicely right now for, for property taxes, so. I went back and forth on this, but after revised numbers, I, I'm going to be in support of this, of this TIF, so. Those are my comments, and if there's any other comments, I'd be open to those. Any comments? Is there any motions or lack of motions, I should say? Going once? Counselor Holland?
I'll move approval, although I feel like I'm backed against the wall.
Understand that.
I'm worried about future Jevson.
There's a motion, there's a motion to, to approve, well, the good news is, we would still be the sounding board at this point in time until the next council comes in, but yes, there's, there's a motion, hold on, there's a motion to approve, is there a second? There's a second by Counselor Genowine? Any other discussion or questions for subjects out there? Katie, I'm going to do a roll call on this.
Tolliver? Price?
Yes.
Holland?
Yes.
Genowine?
Yes.
Helwig?
I'm.
Cheeseman?
Yes.
Murrah?
No, he can't.
He could, if he, you could abstain if you didn't want to.
No, you have, the only reason you can abstain is if you have a conflict.
Or a community interest.
Correct. It's up to me?
Yeah, Miracle, sorry.
Yay. Motion carries five to three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to add one thing, Mayor Paul, I know you got. You have, five seconds, go ahead, Nick. So there's nothing on that property right now, and what you guys are doing is building out your inner city to create that tax base, so thank you very much, and I'll do you right. Thank you, Nick. We will do you right. Thank you. Uh, next item is a resolution purchasing an ambulance for the fire and EMS department. Chief Callahan?
Thank you. Not too often I get to speak twice in one night. Uh, so, a little. What's that?
We can take it off if you'd like.
No, it's all right, I'd like to keep this on there, the clock's ticking on this one. Uh, just a little bit of background, in 2027, one of the vehicles that's scheduled to be, uh, scheduled for replacement is the 2013 Chevrolet G4500 ambulance used by the fire EMS department. Ambulances are not part of the equipment replacement fund for the city. Ambulance are paid through an agreement with this Clay, with Clay County, where the county provides the funding for the purchase, and the city purchases the vehicle. The Clay County Commission discussed the ambulance purchase at their June 10th to 2025 meeting. The commission voted unanimously to authorize the purchase of an ambulance as described below and in the resolution. In 2022, the city and county purchased a wheeled coach ambulance off a Sourcewell contract pricing from Feldfire Equipment in Carroll, Iowa. In designing the next ambulance, the department wanted the ambulance to be like and kind to the 2022 that was purchased with a few minor changes. Current ambulance production lead times are around 18 months. Delivery of this ambulance before you tonight will have an estimated delivery date of March 2027. Feldfire Equipment was again contacted, provided specifications, provided specifications to the department, and produced a contract for purchase under Sourcewell again for the city and county to review. In July 2010, state law changed allowing purchases to be made off of other governmental entity bids or cooperative agreements outside of the state. The quote received from Feldfire Equipment for a wheeled coach ambulance was for a 2026 or newer Ford F550 wheeled coach for $334,509. The local dealer for wheeled coach ambulance Feldfire Equipment from Carroll, Iowa, has agreed to honor the Sourcewell prices for the ambulance, meeting the city and county's needs. Financial consideration, Clay County has budgeted the 334-509 for the purchase of the ambulance, the money would be paid out in 2027. The city will receive the ambulance upon final inspection by the department, and Clay County will provide the check to the manufacturer. Administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a 2026 or newer Ford F550 wheeled coach ambulance from Feldfire Equipment from Carroll, Iowa, for a price of $334,509, and authorizing the city manager or city finance officer to sign the purchase agreement.
Thank you, Chief Callahan, any visitors to be heard on this one? Seeing none, council for discussion? Counselor Holland?
I'll move approval.
Move, move to approve by Counselor Holland, there's a second by Counselor Price. Any air discussion? Is this your only vehicle you're going to come see us about this year?
Yes, I think, pretty sure.
There's only five months left of the year, four months left of the year anyways, so. Counselor Genowine has something?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm like trying to understand the process here, so.
It's a confusing one.
It is a confusing one, so we are authorizing the purchase, the county's actually writing the check, like I, I don't see that part in the resolution necessarily.
Yeah, so, so the county approved it already on June 10th, 2025, to spend the money. The city has to authorize the purchase, sign the resolution, because it's titled and insured in the city's name, and we own it, and so that's how we have to move forward with, with that. This has been a longstanding agreement with the county, this is how they provide, this is their payment for us providing services to 300 square miles of the county.
So it's like if Chief Callahan bought you a car, and you titled and owned it, but you're going to drive him around all the time, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions, is the motion on the table? All's in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Who's saying nay? Motion carries. Uh, just want to take a point of order real quick on item 8A, I think I announced it incorrectly, it was six yays, two nays, just want to clarify that, thank you. 8C, commercial collection license, Bubba Dump LLC.
Thank you. So, the finance office has received an application from Bubba Dump LLC and the owner, Mark Holmes of Elk Point. They submitted an application for a commercial collector's license, they will be renting out 20-yard dumpsters to customers within Union and Clay Counties, and then hauling the contents to the joint powers. The chief of police reported that there's no incidents with this LLC or the owner of the company. The annual license fee is $300, and administration recommends the city council approve the commercial collector's license.
Sorry, is there any visitors to be heard on this? Seeing none, any discussion on Bubba Dump, I almost said shrimp, I almost said Bubba Dump shrimp. On Bubba Dump?
Collection.
Collections. It is a kitchen name. Motion approved by Counselor Genowine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Helwig. Any air discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Who's saying nay? Motion carries. Next item we have is amending city council rules and procedures, reference the consent agenda. Alex?
For the city council and members of the public. With that, the council adopted the, that back on July 1st, 2024, when the council was, I guess, new. But recently, we, there was a proposal to add a consent agenda and kind of create procedures for that consent agenda, and then remove the consensus agenda. Getting rid of that consensus agenda, just because we haven't used it really, maybe just for a public hearing here and there, but other than that, we haven't really used it, but consent agenda is, you're going to be grouping non-controversial routine items, and it's all going to be passed within one motion, as kind of seen within the, the sample agenda that was provided in the packet. You could see it on, we included it after the public hearings, it would be number seven, and then consent agenda, and then it would go before the old business, and then new, new business would proceed, and then within the sample, you can also see that we got rid of the consensus agenda, and we did include a little tidbit at the bottom saying, the mayor and the city council reserve the right to adjourn it to executive session as per SDCL 1-25-2, just because it's kind of good to have on the agenda. But other than that, we also, sorry, included the procedure for consent agendas within the memo, kind of detailing that the agenda memos would still be provided beforehand, so the council members can still read the items that are going to be in the consent agenda. Then, within the meeting day, the items would be announced, the council member or city manager may remove any items that may warrant more discussion. If any item is removed, it would be placed under new business. If there's no objection, the consent agenda is approved without objection, and if any item has been removed, that item would be discussed. Overall, the purpose of trying to put this consent agenda, creating these procedures and removing the consensus agendas to help streamline the process and make it easier to discuss items that made more, more discussion or demand more time. And we would want it to become effective the, beginning October 6th, kind of just to help with the budget meetings that are still kind of going on, and the budget ordinances that would need to be passed. But there's no financial consideration, and administration recommends approval of the updated city council rules and procedures to include that consent agenda, the procedures for the consent agenda, and the removal of the consensus agenda.
Thank you, Alex, any visitors to be heard on this?
Seeing none, council for discussion? I want to make just a quick note and say, thank you to the staff for looking into this, I know this is something that you looked hard into, both John and Alex, and I think you had a couple interns in on that, correct? And I know you brought it to council and had some good feedback, and I think everybody worked pretty well on how this is going to lay out. But all in all, kind of normal operating procedure, what other councils do, so. Counselor Genowine?
Yeah, two questions. One is about minutes, and the other is the invoices payable, I know we had talked about both of those also potentially going under consent agenda, is that still a possibility with, if we pass this as it is, or do we need to define now what will go under consent agenda?
I think within the, on the rules and procedures that I had included, the order of business, we kind of just left it open for items, it's B on there, it says items for consent agenda, just kind of leaving it open to routine or non-controversial items. I think those are definitely items we can include in the future, but I think as of now, we kind of want to keep them off, just so we can get to the hang of things, if John has any other input on that as well.
Great point, we had quite a bit of discussion about minutes, but the minutes were one that... were one that we about, was that half, half the cities had had it under.
Yeah, half.
Consent agenda and some that didn't. But also your minutes should be pretty early on the agenda, and so that's why we left that out. Honestly, I think we talked about doing invoices payable under consent agenda and I think we forgot, put it under there. So I think if, uh, if that is the wishes of the council, then I'd suggest on the order of business, we strike invoices payable as a separate line item and we would include that under your consent agenda and we'll add language that would reflect that.
If I could follow up, um, I, I would think that the, I remember that the approval of the minutes, I don't know why I'm stuck on the minutes, but, um, they, uh, we did discuss that they would have to be the first thing on the consent agenda, um, and it looks like typically that the first item, or the, the items are above where you've placed consent agenda typically don't take long, except sometimes the public hearings. So I can understand waiting on that one, so, um, I don't know, I just wanted that discussion, thank you.
Counsel Helwig?
Um, I do think that this breeds a lot of efficiency and I really appreciate that because it allows us to have, you know, the discussion for the more important things. But I do wanna point out that this means that it's really incumbent on especially the members of the city council, but also on the public, that if they do have questions on any of the items that are on the consent agenda, um, or if we do think that we do need to have a further discussion, that we, you know, really make sure that we do our, our reading and we do our part and that we do appropriately move items to, uh, the new business as appropriate. It essentially becomes our job to just be more clear, uh, because we're not gonna get the same kinda discussion on all those items, it's up to us to sort of be proactive rather than reactive in moving those items in that case.
Counsel Price?
This is sort of a similar vein, um, the, the memo discusses if a council member wants to move something off of the consent agenda and into new business, all they have to do is say so. I do wanna make sure that in the introduction of the consent agenda, that the public is given the opportunity to say whether or not they have something to say on one of those items. And if they, and if somebody in the public wants to speak on one of those items, that they know they need to make that known at the beginning of the consent, consent agenda or the introduction of the consent agenda, so that that item can then be moved later in the agenda for them to comment on it. Because I don't wanna do anything that discourages public comment on something, um, and I could see how that might be confusing for members of the public if they wanted to comment on one of those items.
So just to clarify, if I'm understanding you correctly, Catherine, I agree, I'm sorry, Counsel Price, and I agree, um, when I get to the consent agenda, um, basis of all the council members reviewed the consent agenda, are there any visitors to be heard on any item on the consent agenda? And if there's none, then the council can move to approve the consent agenda. If there is, they would address what item and then a council member would then say, okay, I wanna remove item, in this case, C, on equipment surplus, and it'd be removed, and then that would probably put in new business and then we'd say, does anybody approve the, the remaining of the consent agenda items?
I just think it needs to be clear to the members of the public that, that they're not gonna be introduced individually and that they need to stand up and say, oh, I was gonna talk about item C on this.
Yeah.
And then we need to make the, the, actually instigate it being moved.
True.
And so I could see a, a member of the public not understanding that they're all gonna happen at once and they need to stand up at the beginning to say, oh, I wanted to talk about item C.
So.
Maybe they need a little bit more of an introduction.
Sure.
Just to make that clear to the public when we introduce the consent agenda, how that would work for a member of the public to request one of them to be removed.
Yep, and I, I think especially in the very beginning stages as we do this until not only we get comfortable with, the public get comfortable with it, and I have my little meeting cheat sheet here of how to, to roll with it, I think that's what we do is, is, have the mayor and, or the president presiding, whoever's presiding, is to again instruct, if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on any consent agenda item, please speak now or forever hold your peace kinda thing. And then if they do speak and the council wants to discuss that more topic, we would then ask a council member to remove that from the consent agenda. Am I accurate in that then? So we'll just make sure that we get that properly, that procedure proper on that. Uh, Counsel Cheeseman?
So that, that being said, then as the public enters here, they have to have access to an agenda so they can see what the items are.
Yep, and they're provided right at the front. I think for the most part, most people do grab one, but yes.
Should probably wind up.
Sure. We can't see your face.
No, I mean, this.
Yeah. Oh, that wouldn't be a bad, um, John, would it be possible for Dan, when we get to the consent agenda, just to throw it up on the big screen?
I would think so, it'd be, uh, like field quotes or some of those other items that
are. Put it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Just ask a staffer to, to do that. Okay, I don't mind that idea, thank you, Rich. Any other discussion on this? It looks like the only thing that was recommended to change is to, uh, take the invoices and leave that as an option to put on the consent agenda, is that accurate, John?
Yes, I think actually, under order of business, I would suggest that we probably wanna, if the council's wishes to have invoices payable as part of consent agenda, I would strike that as one of the order of business items, so, um, yeah, I would, I just recommend striking that.
On 24 there?
Yes.
Okay, and then that way then it can be in the procedure for consent.
Yep.
I agree, I think that's what we discussed as well, the invoices can go in that. Any other conversation or discussion on this? Is there a motion to approve with the, the amendment to 24, we're striking the invoices payable? Motion by Counsel Helwig and a second by Counsel Price, any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by saying nay? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next item, we have a resolution to authorize the city manager to sign and for the city finance officer to attest, any purchase for the sales of the Jolly Edition lots?
Thank you. So, uh, as you guys know, we had put those lots up for bid, uh, we'd only received one bid, so the next step in the process is to continue marketing the lots for selling them. And as noted in the memo, we would still bring those purchase offers or the offers to the city council for approval. After that, we would, um, uh, to help facilitate, facilitate the sale, um, after approval by the city's council, we're just asking that, um, the city council approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and for the finance officer to help attest to the Jolly Edition lots, just to kinda help simplify the process. Any proceeds from the land sales will be used to repay the TIF loans. Administration recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and for the city finance officer to attest to the purchase agreements for the sales of the Jolly Edition lots.
Thank you, Alex, any visitors be heard on this? Seeing none, council for discussion? Counsel Holland?
It's kinda pushing the, the limit of what it is, but it was brought up by Slidery about can, can you do holding, property or holding positions, anything you ever done to address that?
So we've been, uh, working, um, with the city attorney on a purchase agreement, language that would allow multiple lot purchases, and so I, I think, um, I think we're close on that, um, that we should be able to probably before the week's out, start advertising that and have that language included in there. If, if I might just answer your question.
I think that's right, he was just, man, how can you put down something and say, I'm gonna hold a property.
Yep, so, um, they would basically, uh, what we'd ask somebody is that they would, put down a thousand dollars to hold that lot, um, and that way we're taken off the market and they'd have ability to figure out their plans and it would go towards their purchase price if they ultimately do purchase it.
It's limited time, right, like 30 or 60 days, something like that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there any motions? Motion approved by Counsel Holland, is there a second? Second by Counsel Cheeseman, any other discussion on this? All's in favor, signify by saying aye? Opposed saying nay? Motion carries, uh, next item we have, uh, city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, a number of different items here, um, just a reminder that city offices are closed on Monday, September 1st with the Labor Day holiday, uh, so the next city council meetings will be on Tuesday, September 2nd. On Monday, August 28th, our planning and zoning commission, um, has a meeting at 5:30 here at City Hall. Uh, the item on their agenda that we know of right now is a rezoning request for lot 2B Michael's Edition, uh, this will be addressed as 440 Adams Street, uh, the request to rezone that land from R2 to R4. And then, uh, that recommendation will likely come to you at the September 2nd city council meeting. Uh, just a reminder, this Friday, uh, is USD move-in day, so we do have, a reminder that Rose Street from Coyote Village north to the Dakota Dome, from 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and North Plum Street from East Cherry Street to Highway 50, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, uh, those are closed on Friday, August 22nd to facilitate the move into the residents' halls at USD. A couple of different board or commission openings, uh, we do have one term available in our Human Relations Commission, that's due to resignation, so it's only a one-year term, and that would expire in May of 2026. We'll accept expression of interest forms for that position until this Thursday, the 21st, and then that'd be part of your September 2nd agenda. Also, we have a three-year term on Business Improvement Board, Business Improvement District Board Number One, that is the board that works with the $2 per night per occupied hotel room fee. Uh, this term, uh, that's open is for somebody that owns or manages a lodging property that participates in the bid collection, so a little bit more narrow audience. We do ask any expression of interest forms for that, opening B also submitted this Thursday and that'd be part of the September 2nd city council agenda. We do have three terms on the city's Historic Preservation Commission that will be expiring in September. At, at least one of these terms need to be filled by someone who lives in a historic district or lives in a registered, uh, properties on their historic registry. Um, just the makeup of that commission, we have at least four members that meet one of those criteria, the other three do not. Uh, expression of interest forms for those positions will be accepted through Thursday, September 4th, and that would be part of your September 15th meeting, uh, to make appointments. Let's see, what else we have? Uh, the city did receive a $20,000 grant through ICMA and the Gates Foundation, and we're gonna be conducting a survey, we'll get that out before the next city council meeting. That's to look at how that funding might be utilized by income-qualified individuals to help make improvements, um, at their property to the resident, uh, single-family owned or occupied properties. Uh, so look for that survey over the next month or certainly feel free to contact City Hall with any questions that you might have. And then finally, we have two raffle notifications, the Vermillion High School football team is selling raffle tickets at $25 each or five for $100, that's, will be sold until September 3rd. The top two winners will each receive a quarter of beef valued at $1,000, while the remaining four winners will receive the other half of the beef. Uh, proceeds from this raffle will be used for the football program, equipment, gear, camps, things along that line. Uh, the second raffle notification, Vermillion Rotary Club is selling Monday night football books, those are $25 each. Uh, the final digit in the score of each team is used to determine a winner in the little chart that they have there, and there's one $50 winner, uh, each week, and the proceeds of this raffle are used to help fund the charitable acts of Rotary.
Thank you, John. Um, next item we have.
Is that raffle the top half and bottom half?
The, uh, which one?
The beef.
The beef.
Oh.
I'm assuming they must be only having a half a cow in the first place.
I, I don't have the details in mind. I do have a ticket already, but.
I'm just doing math in my head right now and I go, there's four and a half and then the other person's getting the quarter, where's the other quarter at?
I, it should be, no, there's, uh, two quarters in, in the half.
Yeah.
The, the top two winners get a quarter, the other four winners get a fourth of a half. It's like geography. It's math class and football at the same time.
Jose, can you draw a pie chart?
Shaped like a cow.
Shaped like a cow.
Four people get the eight and one person get the half.
There you go.
Two people get a quarter.
Two people are getting a quarter.
Two people split the half?
Yes.
Somebody's gonna buy the whole cow though, let's be real, alright.
Oh, now we maybe you did it and added yourself.
And you're the numbers guy. Um, next, next item, the invoices payables, everyone a chance to review the bills?
I do.
I know number 51 was a question on that.
Yep, so I would like to, um, pull that to be voted on separately. We want to be able to pay this when the time comes, but we are still waiting on some required information from the contractor, this is for the Tom Street lift station, um, we're just wanting to get more information on the technology that was purchased.
So the, that's number 51 with H&amp;W contracting for $148,000 and $148,068, right?
Yep, so I would like it to be contingent on them getting us the information that's required.
Move number 51 contingent on Katie getting the information that she needs.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Price, the second by Counsel Holland, any other discussion on this item? Is this, this isn't what's left to vouch, correct, like, we've still got quite a bit?
So.
Counsel Cheeseman?
Where are we with this then? I mean, are, are they finishing?
Yes, and no. They're moving forward. This will actually be an item of further discussion at probably the September 2nd meeting, we're still gathering some more information. Banner, Associates Engineering Consultant, this one is gathering some more data. Shane Greaser, Utilities Manager, is at a conference, he's unavailable today, but, so you will have extended discussion on this one at an upcoming meeting. But we, we, the project costs are more than, this is, would not be final payment, there's still outstanding under there.
Is there any other discussion on item number 51, is motion on the table? All's in favor to, uh, of the motion that that be paid in contingent for the items that Katie needs, am I accurate in that? All's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed saying nay? Motion carries, is there anyone a chance to review the remainder of the bills and are there any questions on those? Are there any motions?
Move the balance of the bills.
Motion.
Do you have a question?
Motion to approve the balance of bills by Counsel Price, is there a second? Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Counsel Cheeseman, now is there any other discussion? Counsel Murrah?
Your expense is key.
My expense?
You and me.
Where's this at?
What, number 67?
Was there a pay for that, someone's reimbursement? I paid for it, they paid for it.
I don't need to understand that. Any other, any other discussion, there's a motion on the table, pay their meaning balance of the bills? All's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed saying nay? Motion carries, I believe that's all we got, is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Counsel Murrah, second by Counsel Price, since Counsel Lieber's not here. All's in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed saying nay? Meeting adjourned.